Good evening. That calls to order the regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission. It will begin with two introductory comments. As a courtesy, as was mentioned before, please turn off all cell phones. Any final action taken on a conditional use permit application tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal to the Planning Commission's decision is filed with the Planning Office by Tuesday, May 27 at 5:00. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, June 17 at 9:15 a.m. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 28 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members on any items listed on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, so we'll start with the consent agenda first. The minutes is item one. Item two is a conditional use permit to allow many storage units on a properly legally described as Block 1, Block 3, Brower's addition, which is south of Hartford, approximately quarter mile south of Hartford. Anyone care to address that one? Item three, a conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square foot requesting 2,500 square feet on the property legally described as Lot 3, Anson's subdivision. Petitioners, Neil Cordell. Anyone want to address that particular item? Okay, item four. Conditional use permit to exceed 1,200 square feet requesting 2,880 square feet on the property legally described as Track 1, Jacob's addition. Norm Stuke is the petitioner. No one cares to address that one? Item five. Conditional use permit number 1425 to transfer building eligibility from the southwest quarter, northwest one quarter, section 24, to the north, one half northwest of, well, this has got a long description, section 24, T-1019, North 3851. John and Linda Bowler, the petitioners, anyone care to address this one? And then we go to item number six, conditional use permit to transfer building eligibility from. It's almost easier to look at the property and say who the petitioner is. Okay? The petitioner is Mark and Roxanne Westover. They want to transfer the one eligibility. Anyone check into this particular item? Number seven, conditional use permit to allow major one, home occupation, restore truck service bodies on property legally described as Owens Track 1 and Jurdis Track 1 in section 34, and that's Marin Schrock. Do you'd like to move that one to the regular agenda?
I think, yeah.
Okay, we'll move number seven to the regular agenda. Item number eight, conditional use permit to allow resale sales of fireworks on property legally described as Houston's Lot, Track 1, Northwest. Petitioners, Raceway Promotions Incorporated. As you can see, that's right west of Houston Speedway. Anyone in the audience care to address this item? If not, we'll move item number seven to the regular agenda.
I'll move approval to the consent agenda.
Second consent agenda, exception to number seven. We've moved it second. All in favor, signal the sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, so now we will move to our regular agenda. Those, if you have all but number seven, feel free to leave at this time. Your petition has been approved, so for you, you can state what you wish. Now, we will go with, first we need to approve the agenda with the addition of number seven, right? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. And with that, Scott will begin with number seven.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, again, County Planning Department. The request tonight is to look at a conditional use permit request, 1429. This is to allow a Class 1 major home occupation, which would be restoring service truck bodies on property located at 25543, 475th Avenue, which is also South Dakota Highway 115 that goes between Sioux Falls and Dell Rapids. The petitioner is Marin Scroll, and the owners are Todd and Kay Roth. The applicant is proposing to operate a auto body, or service truck body restoration business as a home occupation. The applicant has indicated that he would remove the service bodies and mount it on a different truck. The applicant prepared a narrative, which I prepared, which I, outlining the business, which I gave to you in your packet. Basically, the applicant would be conducting the business in a shed, which is located that, in this prop, on this diagram would say metal building, which is this structure right here. If you're familiar with this area, and as you look back on the aerial map, you'll see that there are several residences in the area, way more than 25, basically, but, you know, there's several residents. The two closest residents are located approximately 260 feet to the north and approximately 195 feet to the south of the subject property. The area to the west of the subject property is currently agricultural property in use for crops. The applicant has indicated in his narrative that the business activity would occur approximately, daily, from approximately 12 noon to 5:00 p.m., and the small scale of the business and limited hours should not significantly impact the residences in the area, nor interrupt the agricultural activities occurring to the west and the general vicinity. We also should be looking at how this might impact orderly development and improvement of surrounding grounds. As you can see, the development has basically already occurred in this area. There is some potential development that could occur to the west. However, a lot of that is in the floodplain, as you can see here on this map. The other item that we are to consider are the, what kind of infrastructure is there? And currently, there is already utilities and road to the property, and it has direct access to a paved county highway. The other item, or the next item, is off-street parking, and the applicant has an attached garage with a rather long driveway, so there is ample parking for the customers, and the paved, the parking is paved, comes off a paved road, so that would greatly reduce any dust that might occur. Lastly, we are to look at the potential for noxious odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibrations, lighting, et cetera. This shouldn't be much, considered a nuisance because of the limited hours. There's also approximately a 200-foot buffer between this property and some of the other properties in the area, as well as it is on a paved highway. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1429 with 12 conditions, or, excuse me, it looks like just 11, looks like one of them got numbers wrong. And I will go through a couple slides, and then I'll read the conditions of approval for the audience, because I think they would be interested in hearing them. Once again, this is the shed, which is going to, which the activity is going to occur in. I'm standing basically at the shed, looking to the north, sorry, south, and this is the property that's located to the south. I'm looking here at the property, looking towards the neighbor to the north. This is the applicant's subject property. You can see the county Durango is parked there, so there, and there's like a little pull-off there, so there is adequate parking for any customers that may come, and there's quite a long driveway. This is the property to the north, standing at the applicant's driveway, and this is the property to the south, once again, standing from the applicant's driveway. So I will go back to where the home occupation is to occur, which is in this structure, which is located in the back of the property, as you see, located right here. As I indicated, staff is recommending approval with 11 conditions, and I'll read those for you. Number one, that the property shall obtain and maintain a sales tax license from the South Dakota Department of Revenue. Number two, that no alterations to any building shall indicate from the exterior that the building is being utilized in whole or in part for any purpose other than residential or agricultural use. Number three, that the applicant be limited to one non-illuminated wall sign, which shall not exceed two square feet, and one non-illuminated freestanding sign, which shall not exceed four square feet of area for the home occupation. A sign permit shall be obtained prior to the installation of any sign. Number four, that the employees of the home occupation shall be limited to residents of the dwelling and up to two non-resident employees, not to exceed four employees on the site. Number five, no stock and trade shall be displayed or stored outside of the enclosed structure located on that property, which would be that building. Number six, that a minimum of two off-street parking spaces be provided. Each parking space shall measure at least nine feet by 18 feet, and shall be kept in a dust-free manner. Number seven, that any finished painting area be ventilated, so not to allow any buildup of noxious fumes. All requirements, all required fire and building codes must be met. A dry chemical extinguisher shall be required in the finishing area. Number eight, that the chief building inspector conduct an inspection of the premise prior to the operation, determine that all fire codes and safety codes are met. Number nine, that any new exterior lighting shall be shoebox style that directs the light downward. Number 10, that the hours of operation shall be Monday to Friday, sorry, Monday to Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. And number 11, that the ma, that a maximum of 2,000 square feet of accessory building shall be used for the home occupation. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and I believe the applicant's here.
Questions for Scott?
Scott, I see the drive to the building in the back. Is that accessed off the petitioner's driveway?
It is actually, if you look, if you look at the picture that I took of, it appears, this is looking sort of to the south, and at one time there was access off a driveway that ran along the south side of the property to the applicant's garage. I did have a neighbor that came in and talked to me. I think he said he owned or lived over here in one of these buildings. He said that, that there was some question about the legal access, and that's why he took this, they took this dirt and placed it there, so they would no longer access that. But, in any event, they would have access to the property from, you know, this area. They could, they could move along here off their own property if they needed to, to get back there.
Okay.
So they do have legal access off of State Highway 115, right here.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? If not, we'll hear from the petitioner. Mr. Ford, state your name and address.
I'm David Shelton. I'm here, I'm the Realtor for Martin Scroll, who's also here. My address is 3500 South Western Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. The building presently is, has been used for the last several years as a snap-on tools depot for tools to be delivered. Access was granted for a period of time, we understand, from the, from the south, the property onto the south by a verbal easement. The petitioner doesn't, has no desire to continue to use that easement, and chooses to access this building from, in a different manner. We've had surveyors look at that, and, so, this was an extra step to make sure that, that this particular use, Miss Scroll is a-
We can't hear you.
You can't?
No.
Okay.
Is the microphone on?
Do I need to do something? Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine up here, but it must not become clear system.
Sure, yeah, sorry.
Now we can hear, now, yeah.
Is that better? Okay. Anyway, so, really, this was a, we want to make sure that, that this desire to have a hobby business was going to be compliant and approved prior to the purchase of the property, so, that was the, that is the point of doing this, to make sure that there's compliance with county requirements.
Any questions on the conditions that were set, Ford?
No, sir. Those are all satisfactory to the-
So the-
Okay, all right, you'll get your turn. Okay, that, anything else, probably? Okay, your turn, come up.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
You were the Realtor.
Yes, sir.
As Realtor, do you have any light you can shed on this driveway issue?
None other than, it was, it appeared that it was a, that it was a verbal agreement from an unrelated party to this transaction, so we, we looked to remedy that right away, so that all access to the building. There are actually two lots, the lot to the, to the back, there's the Owens Track, and if you could, if you want to, just, yeah, look at that survey. The Jurdis Track does have a building eligibility there, a rural housing eligibility, does not presently have access off of 475th directly to that, to service that lot, as a, if that were to stand alone as a, as a building lot sometime in the future. But, the, the current owner, I understand, is no longer accessing the, the building from its, the previous easement, and that we are wanting to stay compliant, want to make sure that everything is, is good with everybody, and that's why we're here. There are many people using accessory buildings up and down 475th that may or may not have a major home occupation permit, but we just thought it prudent to take this route in advance, so.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer it? Yeah.
Anybody else in the commission? Commissioner Bar?
I guess I, it does bring up a question I have for Scott, is how close is the building to the lot behind it?
I think if you look at the site plan, it, it appears, if you look at that house to the north, that's, it's eight feet, or 8.3 feet, and it looks like it's similar. It only need to be, because it's owned ag, three feet, so it meets the setbacks, it appears to me.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay, now, would I come forward? Questions you may have? Can I just please state your name and address, please?
I'm Darla Cesar, and I'm one of the owners of the property of 25547 Rockridge Avenue, Renner, South Dakota.
Are you north or south?
Right kitty corner across the road, basically. It's across the highway, basically, we're in that addition up there.
Okay.
Basically, just directly straight across. I just, my concern is that, I don't think I'm for this, to do this, because I think it, I don't know if it's going to affect our property values or not, but I just don't want this place to look, the rest of us in our neighborhood keep our yards up and everything, and I just don't want it to become a junkyard, basically, is what I'm-
Well, it's understandable. And you understand the condition where it says all, everything has to be inside that building, there's no outside storage allowed?
Yeah, I, I, basically, my question answered then when he said that. So then, I don't have a problem with that, I guess, as long as it doesn't get, you know, I was thinking a lot-
Well, I had that thought, same thought as you did, that, you know, all of a sudden there's bodies, are there going to be somebody sitting outside someplace, or whatever, but it's a good-sized building, and the requirement says they have to be inside.
Okay, well, then I'd get-
Is that not correct, Scott?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Well, that was my only question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, come forward, please. State your name and address.
Steve Fletcher, 25539, 475th Avenue, Renner, South Dakota.
Are you right adjacent to this?
I'm two houses north of the property. And 30-some years ago, we bought this land, and it was 3.7 acres with no, there was like five lots sold by Wade Peterson at the time, and none of them had housing eligibility behind them. That was a stipulation that said, you couldn't build anything back there, or anything could be done with the land back there, except mow the grass. And there is no road access to the back building unless you use Wade's access road to his trailer car. So, they want to build a road around the front of their house and back to it, I guess, is the way I understood it. Well, that, you know, that's fine, but, I went through the same thing, trying to open a business at my place 25 years ago, and we got shut down. They shut down, a guy built a trailer right next house to me, because he was building trailers, and so he had to, you know, close business and go someplace else. And there is no commercial property in that area, there is nothing. As far as a snap-on representative, he's been gone for, I've seen a snap-on truck there one time in the last five years, and the shed, he's gone all the time anyway, so-
You understand that this is a major home occupation and not a commercial business? There's a big difference there, because this is not zone commercial.
It's still going to be commercial.
I know it's an old business, I understand that.
Anytime you got a sales tax license, you're taking that money and doing business, it's commercial.
It's what was in effect, 25 years ago, we did not have large home occupations available to people. I'm sure we didn't. When I started on the Planning Commission 12 years ago, they were just starting to put that together at this, that time.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is all fairly new in the last, you know, 12, 15, 10 or 12 years, so.
But, I mean-
Since we know they're out there, we'd like to make sure somehow we can address them and control them.
Yeah. And two, if he's doing van bodies and stuff, there's going to be paint, you know, and there's going to be a paint booth in the, inside, there's going to be, I mean, I've been around the automotive business my whole life, I know what it takes to do this, and you can smell a body shop, you know, 200 yards away, as soon as you start painting and you're putting, putting that spray out through your vent system, and, I mean, I'm 100% against it. It's residential, it should stay residential.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Fletcher, is there anything that they could do that would make it easier for you to accept it, or is there anything, any changes in the plan that would, would make it better? Or just not have it?
I just, I just prefer not to have it.
Sure.
That's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this issue?
If you can say anything.
Petitioner, you'd like to go, this lady, one more time, you'll come back, petitioner will try the other. Please state your name and address, please.
Delva Go Bronson, 25541, 475th Avenue. I'm the one that's just right next to him.
To the north or the south side?
North.
Okay. Okay, would you care to, any comments?
Oh, I had talked to him before about it, and I, oh, well, but the more I think about it, because I just don't care to have people out there working in the garage, big garage and stuff, it's not that far away from my place. And I do have grandkids, great-grandkids, and I guess with them, having people bring their vehicles and stuff like that, I guess I just don't care to have that. I, now, I'm just really not for it. At first, when they first talked to me, I thought, oh, but no, now I am really not for it, because it's, they're not that far away from me, and I do have my septic tank over there, if anybody drives and wrecks, I mean, I'm just not for it at all, because there's not, I don't know how many feet, but from my house to theirs, there's really not that much area for being out in the country.
Okay, any questions for you, Delva? Anyone? Not, thank you. Okay, unless you have something else?
Yeah, I just hope that we can do something about this, because-
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Petitioner, you want one last comment, so we can close the floor and-
I guess I would just add to the, to those comments, that we appreciate the concern and the fact that it's a, it is a pride of ownership property, and that's one of the attractive elements of this for the buyer, is to, is to have a property that would, would continue to be very, not only pleasant to look at, but to be neighborly. Also, it's not residential zoning, as we, as we understand it, it's ag zoning that allows residents, that allows this type of activity, and so we're not asking for something outside of the, outside of what is allowed in A1 zoning. And that's, that's really it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there any reason that they would be driving over their neighbor's septic system?
No, sir. And if the neighbor's septic system is encroaching on the property, which we don't believe it is.
Okay. All right, any other questions in the Planning Commission? If not, we'll close the floor, open for discussion or action.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move approval with conditions.
Move for approval with conditions?
I'll second that.
Second, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, you know, honestly, when it comes to your neighbors, you might not think this is going to be a great deal, but the next family could move in there with four teenagers with motorcycles and dogs, and, and they would not even have to come before us. They could live there, racing their motorcycles, chasing their dogs, without any kind of extra attention from the county. We have some conditions on these folks, and I believe that it should make it livable. If they start storing stuff outside and stuff, come to us, and we'll enforce that condition. Anyway, that's what I'm saying.
Any other comments, discussions?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Bar, but then my other question is, right now, that the driveway is paved, so I don't know if we need to have anything to clarify, that since that goes onto a paved highway, that that, it will continue to be paved? I guess I just know the conditional use-
It's not paved.
It's not paved.
It's not paved.
The drive from, the Roth property is paved, but not that behind-
This is not a commercial property.
That's paved to their house, but to that building back there, it's not paved.
They used Wade, Wade Peterson's-
All right, we have a second and a motion, the floor is closed, please, thank you. We have a second and a motion, any other discussion by the Planning Commission? Okay, all in favor of the motion with conditions? Do you have one?
So there was no more, I mean-
Yes, you can discuss more if you'd like.
Okay, I just didn't-
Just closing the floor here.
Yeah, so, that's not, that's not a necessity.
Because this is not a commercially zoned-
It's not a business.
If this was a commercially zoned property, it would have to be paved back there.
I'm not talking about, I guess the thing is, right now, we don't know where that driveway is going to be.
Well, they can put a gravel driveway across their yard and-
Right, but I'm, I guess I'm trying to clarify is that we don't have another access onto one of these things, and that's my only question.
Yeah, they, to answer that, if I may, Mr. Chairman, more than likely, it would be precluded, because the state highway would not grant them another approach.
Okay.
So, that being said, I mean, the state highway, DOT has total control, and typically, they are not going to give another approach, especially on that busy highway.
Well, that, that was my big concern. I didn't want another driveway coming out. Okay, thank you.
Another commission?
Now it'll be quiet.
While you're at it, Scott's, we're discussing right now. Okay, no any more discussion part of the Planning Commission? If not, we have a motion to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Okay, what's that, number?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just would like to make a little comment about this- I just would like to make a little comment about this addition to, in our county. There are more people live in this area than live in the town of Thurman, yet it's unincorporated, and I think, you know, there are just a few other places like that, and it's, it's too bad that they don't have control over their own area the way that a municipality would.
And that's common throughout the county, some of the older housing developments.
Well, the town of Lyons is not actually a town.
Yes, nor is Rowena. Of course.
Of course. We have all kinds of.
There's all kinds of, okay, we have one more? We're done? Anything? Question, where, as part of the building inspector?
Um.